Thank you for working with the applicants. So, here we go. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing, in writing, for 5 minutes, as a representative of a group or organization. Looked a little funny. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County, this statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Robin, is there changes to our agenda?
Yes, 924 McFerrin has requested a deferral. And staff would like to ask that we move the Design Guideline Consolidation project to the end so we can get through some of those cases that probably won't take very long and those people can get out of here if they want to. And also that you defer your decision. Go ahead and open the public hearing for today, take public comment, have discussion, but save the decision for the November 20th public hearing. As you all saw, it's a hefty document and we thought some more time would probably be wanted by everybody.
Thank you, Robin. Is there a motion to accept that agenda change, agenda and agenda change?
So moved.
So moved, second.
I'm sorry, I'm so apologize. 1722 Fifth Avenue North, we'd like to request to move to consent. The applicant has agreed to all the conditions.
1722.
So that would be 924 deferred and 722 Fifth moved to consent and design consolidation moved to the end.
Okay, with those changes.
Also, we had a motion second.
We did?
I'll move that we add Fifth Avenue case as well as amendment to that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Are there any council members present?
Yeah.
Ah, congratulations at-large council. We also want to approve last month's minutes of August 21st. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes and our minutes are approved. Thank you.
This month's consent agenda includes 4205 A&amp;B Elkins Avenue, new construction addition, 3546 Richland Avenue, new construction infill, 2509 West Linden Avenue, new construction addition, 3605 Westbrook Avenue, new construction addition, 200 Broadway, new construction addition and alterations, 1,000 Paris Avenue, new construction addition, and the one we just mentioned, 1722 Fifth Avenue North. Staff has reviewed these applications, determined that they meet the respective design guidelines, and recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? So, none?
So I move for approval of the consent agenda.
There's motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you. Give me just one more second. Councilor Berkeley Allen, is there, would you like to speak now or wait? Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Cash is here as well.
Welcome, Councilor Cash, and congratulations to you as well.
Did you want to speak now or did you want to speak later?
I could wait.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have new mics, is this working? Okay, I would think red means no, but red means go. All right. So, first we have 1110 and 1112 Montrose Avenue. The commission will remember these cases from July. At that time, the applications were for the demolition of these two existing non-contributing structures and the construction of these two infill structures. The commission approved the proposal subject to conditions which require revisions. The applicant has provided revised drawings that they feel meet the conditions but staff disagrees, so we're here today with those revisions. Here are the conditions that were approved in July. The first three are the ones that are issued today. Number one, the overall height shall not exceed 25 feet. Number two, the eve shall not exceed 12 feet. And three, the finished floor height shall be consistent with adjacent historic houses. So here is the front elevation of the revisions that have been submitted. These revisions do meet the height requirements. The overall height is just under 25 feet and the eaves are less than 12 feet. However, in order to achieve this, the applicant is proposing to significantly regrade the lot. This drawing shows the neighboring historic house to the right and the two proposed houses sitting atop of the new grade. The dash line below shows the existing grade while the solid line shows the proposed grade. Note the difference in height at the retaining wall on the left and the low finished floor height of the infill. The height of the original proposal was partially driven by the depth of the two structures and the slope of the lot. The applicant proposes to eliminate that problem by flattening out the grade. Staff has no issue with some regrading along the sidewalk. Constructing a low retaining wall and filling in the slope of the front yard would be consistent with other properties along the street. However, as you can see, the grade slopes up from the street and also down toward the left. The current grade at the proposed setback for number 1110 is about 2 feet lower than the front of the historic house at number 1108. And the grade at the setback for a number 1112 drops about another 2 feet. So building up the grade at the setback as much as 4 feet and then constructing 2 25-foot tall infill structures on top of that, which would be 1 foot taller than the tallest historic house in the block, is inappropriate. Staff finds that the existing grade should be largely maintained with the floor heights of the proposed houses stepping down from the existing house at number 1108 as the street level does. This would help to keep the new taller ridge lines below the historic house to the right and would keep the finished floors consistent with the street rather than build up and to be level in elevation while the street itself slopes away. Sort of a final note, if the lot is leveled out as proposed, not only will the taller heights be accentuated and the floor heights be skewed in relation to the context, but the lots will be built up significantly in comparison to the context. This will be particularly jarring at this low point here along the street where you can see that existing retaining wall right where you enter the neighborhood from 12 South. On the other side of that wall, the grade will jump several feet. So in conclusion, our recommendation for both properties is almost identical to that we made in July. The changes are in red. And it is two separate applications, so you will need to make two separate motions. But in conclusion, we recommend approval of the infill with the following conditions: the overall height as measured from existing grade shall not exceed 25 feet; the eve height shall not exceed 12 feet from existing grade; the finished floor height shall be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses; staff shall approve the setback; staff shall approve the materials; and staff shall approve the mechanical and utility locations. With these conditions, we find the project meets Section 3 of the Design Guidelines. Do you have questions for me or do the applicant is here and wishes to speak as well?
Commissioners, any question for now? Okay, thank you, Jenny. Applicant?
My name is Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street. I'm the, one of the architects working on this project. Just wanted to mention to start that the, this lot is owned by a family trust. They've owned it for many years now and their goal here is not to build something quickly or cheaply. They're trying to build lasting houses that contribute to the historic character of the neighborhood and long-term rentals in a neighborhood that does not have a lot of those. And they really want to do this right. So, that being said, the first note I wanted to make is that there was no mention of the existing grade in the original recommendation. So we went back and looked at the existing conditions which were described a bit. And, you know, as you can see from the pictures, the entire street right now at some point was leveled out. You can kind of see it in this contour map as well. And retaining walls were built at each, at the front of each lot. We also have some of the original pictures. The bottom picture is the house that was originally on this lot. It was on actually both lots. And though it's kind of difficult to see, it does look like the front yard of that lot was level. There looks like maybe the top of a step at the front of the picture as well. So it seems like that probably when the lot was bought and divided, someone came through, leveled the lot, pushed the grade to the front, and then rebuilt these two structures on it. So part of what we're trying to do here is actually to sort of meet the historic context around us and take it back to what the lot probably used to be to match that context. We've worked pretty hard to bring the overall height of these, whoops, going too far now, of these houses down. You can see in the diagram in the bottom there, we're not just building the grade up to make up for all that height. We did reduce the overall height quite a bit of these houses as well. And part of the, sort of the last reason that we are trying to do this is it's generally discouraged by historic to split levels in duplexes and make them look like two separate units. A lot of times, recommendations are given to try to make it look like a single unit on a lot. And so by regrading it to match the previous historic context, it would allow us not to have to break the floor levels between the duplexes and really accentuate the fact that it is two duplex units. I think that's about it for me. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So do you anticipate retaining walls around the sidewalk edge? And if so, how high would they be?
So obviously that'll kind of come down to the final grading. We would likely try to match what the neighboring lots are, which I think is close to almost 40, well, the wall between our lot and the lot next door is about 40 inches tall. I'm not sure that we would need it to be that tall. It might be that we sort of grade it out and then slowly bring it back towards the front again to a shorter retaining wall so that we aren't accentuating the height difference as much. But it's hard to say exactly at this point in the design just how tall that wall would need to be.
So if it was 40 inches, then would you then have to put a 3 1/2 foot high railing around it on top of that wall?
Ooh, that's a good question. I would have to look at the codes. I have not designed retaining walls like that very often.
So would you anticipate taking the wall up that high or putting a railing on it?
So likely in that case, we would try to keep the wall to, I think it's a, is it a 20-inch max or 20? I can't remember what the code is. Whatever the maximum is that we wouldn't need a railing because obviously that railing wouldn't be a great look for that wall along the street.
Anyone else? Oh, in the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we may ask more questions? Open public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this project? If not, we will close public hearing and go into discussion. Okay, thank you.
I can't be sure of this, but I think the back's driving the front in this project. There's existing parking back there and to have a level floor line where you essentially are close to or at a, something that's a slab-on-grade on part of the rear house and then the front is elevated or over crawl space or some iteration, you know, close to that is, seems to be what's going on here. And the applicant even pointed out that having a duplex that would be taller in the back to respond to the existing grade than it would be in the front would mean, you know, the height would bump up at the rear. You'd kind of hyphen it and take the two and see some roof line and some tie-in of those two things in the, in the back. The question is, in my mind, the question is, with the adjustments that the applicant has made, which would you rather see? Something that bumps up in the back that more closely represents the existing grade in the front or something that's straight all the way across and builds up all the grade in the front and poses some additional challenges to deal with in the front and the potential for retaining walls and so forth?
Lee, do you have any comments as an architect?
I think to that question, Ben, Commissioner Mosley, I would probably prefer to see the front equal to, but not, not lower than, the back addition if it were to step up. But I'm just curious too, historically, where we measure grade from and, you know, is that an issue that, you know, for down the road to say that you could build up a lot to whatever you wanted it to be to then measure the grade from?
In all zoning and code issues, yes, it is an issue and you run into it quite frequently. You know, historic notwithstanding, that's always a matter of discussion in where you measure it from and it's not always consistent. I think to make a habit of raising, you know, end- surrounding a regulation to kind of raise it so that it works for your particular situation is, that's what it is. And that's what your question is, is that okay? I would tend to say no. I think the, the outcome of that, the unintended consequence of that in other places on the site and other things that happen oftentimes can't be foreseen and advantages, certainly the applicant and in this case is, not advantaging the applicant is a bad thing, but I think there are, as the staff has pointed out and in their evaluation has said, not, not something that we would be in the business of doing or that would be necessarily in keeping with the guidelines.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we ready to make a motion?
I would, so if I heard you correctly, Commissioner Fitz, you'd prefer for it to be flat and not have a step in it. That would be architecturally preferred. And normally, I would agree with that if, if the site didn't have these. In choosing between the two, my choice would not be to keep it flat and build the front of the grade up. I think splitting the house, you know, we've done ridge raises on historic houses in the front. This is not a historic house, but where those things don't, you know, you're 50% back in the structure itself where essentially what you're seeing is roof, more roof shape and shingle that seems less perceptible than something that's a facade that jumps up half a story. It's typically how we've seen it and in evaluating things we've approved in the past is less noticeable than something that is, you know, a two-story on a one or a one and a half on a one that has some facade element associated with it. But that's just my evaluation over projects we've perceived. That would be the lesser evil, and not an evil, it would be the less intrusive of the two solutions.
I agree with you on that. I have more of a concern with the change in grade and adding that grade to achieve that height.
Jenny, can we have the difference of the recommendations with the red line so we can be clear on what we are, have a motion on? Had a red line. That's it. Would your, that be any different in including a statement, amending it, what's?
You know, in looking at that, I think, and I don't know what the, I can't speak for the intent of the staff in making those adjustments. I think in general, to add 4 feet of grade is not seen as acceptable by the staff. There's grade manipulation when you do construct, demolition and construction, which is understood. I think to the extent that this project would be approved with the staff's recommendation that some adjustment of the grade through the course of construction is anticipated, but that bringing in substantial fill of, you know, dump truck loads of fill to make the site work is not a desirable solution. I'll add that to the discussion just so we're not, you know, going out and surveying the existing grade around the house and trying to extrapolate those points in the future for...
Are we ready to make a motion?
I move approval with the staff's recommendation.
Where is the motion? There's a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So the motion passes.
What did you do to it, right?
Yes, that's, yeah, we're just, that for 1110 Montrose. We are now looking at 1112 Montrose. Jenny, will you have to come back up and?
No, I presented them all together. If you could just pass two motions, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, just...
So, given, given the discussion that's occurred before and that the houses are relatively identical and the situations are very similar, I would move approval on 1112 Montrose with staff's recommendation.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed? The motion passes.
The next item is 2121 Westwood Avenue. Before I begin with my presentation, I'll just point out that there was some public comment included both in the staff recommendation document and stuff that was sent or received by my office after the publication of the staff recommendation was sent to the commissioners via email. So 2121 Westwood was constructed circa 1926. As you can see in the metro map, the house was constructed at the back of the lot. So if you look at the top there with Westwood Avenue, the house is all the way kind of towards the back, towards the alley. The application before you today is to construct infill in the front of the existing historic house. This neighborhood is zoned RS 7.5, which is single-family zoning. Therefore, under the current zoning, if a new house is constructed on the lot, the existing historic house will have to be converted to an outbuilding. Staff finds that constructing infill in front of the historic house to be inappropriate. The building is listing as a contributing resource to the Hillsborough West End National Register of Historic Places Historic District, and staff finds that it contributes also to the historic character of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Here is the excerpt from the National Register report. The report attributes the house to the circa 1930, although staff research has showed that it's a little bit earlier, it's about 1926. Research on the lot also indicates that the existing house at 2121 Westwood was constructed to be the primary house on the lot, even though it has a deep front setback. It was never an accessory structure to another house and there was never another house in front of it on the lot. Here's just an excerpt from one of the deed that dates to 1926. And it's showing here, if you read all the language, what it's showing is that the lot is, that was sold in 1926, is 50 by 185, which is the current dimensions and matches the dimensions that's shown in that 1926 deed. Prior to 1926, the lot was part of a larger lot that included the lot to the east 21119 Westwood. Even though this circa 1931 Sanborn map implies that 2121 and 2119 Westwood were at one point houses that were part of the same lot, we know again from the deed research that as early as 1926, around the time this structure was built, and I think a few years before the structure next door was built, that it was its own separate lot. Although it is atypical for a house to be constructed at the back of the lot like 2121 Westwood, it is not unique in Nashville. MHCC staff has identified several houses constructed in the 1920s, the 1930s, and the 1940s at the back of their lots. Here are several examples. This is 2508 Woodlawn Drive, 2509 Ashwood, 2807 27th Avenue South. You may remember this house, in 2017, the commission approved a rear addition to the house. 133 Bowling Avenue in Richland West End. This house is currently for sale and over the last several months, I've been speaking with the current owner as well as prospective buyers. And staff has consistently told both the current owner and prospective buyers that we would not support building an infill in front of the house. 1907 Beechwood, again, this one might look familiar to you and it's a little bit more unusual because in the early 1990s or late 1980s, somebody moved a house in front of this house. So even though this was a historic house at the back of the lot, there's now a house in front of it, but that was done prior to the overlay, so the Historic Zoning Commission did not have any say in that. And this, and MHCC earlier this year approved a two-story addition to this structure at the back of the lot, just in order to make it a little bit more usable for the current 1724 Linden in Belmont Hillsborough. Staff over the years have received many inquiries about this house, asking if it can be torn down or if a house can be constructed in front of it. I think most recently, there was a flurry of inquiries about 2015 or 2016, and staff consistently reported that the house was contributing and that it was not appropriate to construct new infill in front of it. And in 2018, just last year, the commission approved a rear addition to this house with a reduced rear setback. This is 923 Bradford. Again, earlier this year, staff told a potential buyer that we would not support infill in front of it. And directly across the street from that house is 918 Bradford. And then finally, there is 1901 Shelby. Again, this is another house that staff has had many inquiries about over the years. Historic house built at the back of the lot. And staff has consistently told people that we would not support building an infill in front of it. So this is the image of 2121 Westwood currently. It's hard to kind of see from the street because of the vegetation, but it is there in the back of the lot. With so many examples throughout Nashville of the houses built at the back of their lots, these houses represent a small and significant trend in home building in the 1920s through the 1940s. Staff does note that over the years, there have been a handful of cases where the houses at the back of the lot have been deemed non-contributing primarily because of their date of construction. There were two houses from the late 1940s which staff found to be outside the period of significance. One was 2008 Nachos Trace. In that case, that house was demolished and new infill was constructed. Another example is 906 Bosco Bowl, which was a non-contributing structure. In that case, they got an SP and MHCC approved infill at the front of the lot, so there's two houses on that lot currently. So, but going back to 2121 Westwood after that survey of historic houses at the back of their lots, staff again finds it inappropriate to construct infill in front of this historic house for several reasons. The main task of the Historic Zoning Commission is to preserve the architectural and historic character of Nashville's neighborhoods. First and foremost, this is done through preventing the demolition of historic houses and significant architectural features on historic buildings. Even though the applicant is not proposing to physically demolish the house at 2121 Westwood, by constructing new infill in front of it, it is destroying the historic house's relationship to and contribution to the historic character of the Hillsborough West End Historic Neighborhood and the National Register District. A defining character of this overlay is its mixture, of its mixture of small, medium, and large homes with a variety of setbacks. Constructing a house in front of this house is akin to demolition because it's destroying the defining features of this house in sight, which is primarily its deep front setback. The Design Guidelines state that setbacks for new constructions should be similar to adjacent buildings because the document assumes that the lot is vacant. This assumption can be made because the guidelines are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards, which state, quote, "The historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. The removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property should be avoided." The deep front setback of this property is part of its historic character. Placing a building in front of the primary historic building irreparably changes its historic setbacks... historic setbacks and forever removes the character defining feature of the historic space. The design guidelines state that the dominant rhythm of the street should be maintained. Placing a building in front of this house greatly alters the historic rhythm of spacing in the street, which again was houses at the front, then this one house located at the back. It is not known why the builder of 2121 Westwood or the other ones throughout Nashville chose to build the house at the back of the lot. Nonetheless, the history and character of this particular house and lot is that it is a deep front setback with a large front yard. The proposed infill will destroy the historic context of the existing contributing structure, relegating it to the role of an outbuilding rather than the primary structure as it was originally intended. And because this neighborhood is zoned single-family, the existing house will have to be considered an outbuilding under zoning, and just kind of looking at it as if it were an outbuilding, the size of this structure would not meet the design guidelines for outbuildings either. The design guidelines state that the orientation for new construction should be visually consistent with the surrounding historic buildings, because the document again assumes that the lot is vacant for infill structures. This assumption can be made because the guidelines are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards. And the Secretary of Interior Standards say that the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved, and the removal of historic materials or alteration of features should be maintained. So I'd like to just note before moving on and showing the infill drawings that, you know, staff is not saying that nothing can be done to this house, we're just asking to treat it as if, as every other historic house in our neighborhoods. You know, staff has mentioned to the applicant that we would be supportive of things like enclosing this side carport or porch and making that habitable space, or perhaps building in the rear yard. According to the site plan submitted, there's about 20 feet of space in the rear yard. You know, staff would be willing to support a rear setback or an addition back here, perhaps one that's two stories, or perhaps one that's taller. There's a lot of unknowns, but, you know, we're not saying that nothing can be done to the house, we're just saying that we find that infill to be inappropriate. So, I will now show what's being proposed for the infill. Here's the site plan. And staff did not analyze these drawings as we typically do for infill, so we didn't look at the fenestration pattern, the materials, just because from staff's perspective, it's not appropriate to have an infill in front of it. And we do have some concerns if the commission does determine that infill is appropriate, that this might be larger than what is in the surrounding neighborhood. So here's the house, it's about one and a half stories, it's a total height of about 30 feet at the front. Here's the side elevation, the other side elevation, first floor plan, second floor plan, and then these are the two or three to four houses on either side of that structure. Again, kind of an immediate context is lower scale, one and a half story, this might be a little bit taller, but again, staff is just concerned that really infill is inappropriate here to begin with. So just some summary of points, and I'll move on. 2121 Westwood was constructed circa 1926 and contributes to the historic character of the conservation overlay. Constructing infill in front of the lot destroys the house's historic context in relation to the rest of the historic neighborhood, and also destroys one of its defining features, its deep front setback. While its location at the back of the lot is unusual, this house is not unique in this conservation overlay or other conservation overlays. MHDC staff has consistently told owners and prospective buyers over the years that new infill cannot be constructed in front of these contributing houses. And four, staff finds that there are ways that this house can be expanded with a rear addition and enclosure of the side carport porch. Now, it may not get the owners everything that they need or want, but it's not like this, this building could be expanded under the existing design guidelines. So staff recommends disapproval of the new construction, finding that its location, setback, and orientation do not meet sections two and three of the design guidelines for the Hillsborough West End Conservation Zoning Overlay. And the applicant is here, and he does have a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it over.
Thank you, Melissa, that was a good report to read. Thank you. Applicant?
Am I changing the slides, or are you? Just let me know when you're ready.
Blaine, let us know when you're ready as well. Give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Blaine Bonadis. I am the architect for the proposed project before you. I reside at 1606 Linden Avenue. I would like to reserve any of the remaining time to address any public comments. We understand that staff deems it inappropriate to build a larger new structure proud of the smaller existing structure situated against the rear setback of the lot because they deem it to be a contributing structure. We argue that the existing structure is actually non-contributing. Slide two. If the commission agrees and deems our proposal appropriate, we are committed to working with staff to design a house that we would add historic character to the neighborhood and meet all the design guidelines. At this time, we are only asking for conditional approval for the commission to build a modest house that is appropriate for the historic neighborhood. With that being said, we would like to focus our attention whether or not the small existing structure in the rear of the contributing to the historic character of the district. First, we disagree that staff's assumption that the building was constructed as a primary structure. While we agree with the finding of staff's deed research, we disagree that showing the lot was divided in 1926 proves anything about the characteristics in the initial construction and intent of those structures. There is no information known about the original structure themselves and for their intent before the lot was split in 1926. Separate deeds do not prove the original intent of the structures on the property if they were built before the lot split, only that the structures were owned separately after 1926. We are beholden to the evidence that describes the buildings with their size and their location. Since we have no information from before 1931 historic map, after the lot was subdivided, we cannot definitively say either way what the original intent of the structure was. Staff themselves state, and I quote, "It is not known exactly why the builder of 2121 Westwood chose to build the house in the back of the lot." This shows that staff acknowledges a lack of information about the original construction and the intent of the structure. For these reasons, we also acknowledge that we cannot definitively state that this was initially a secondary structure, as we believe. So, we don't know, they don't know. So therefore, we are left making an educated guess based on the information available to us. We would argue that its small scale, location on the lot, the fact that it does not have a defined forward-facing entry points it to it being devised as a secondary structure. To our point, we believe that the secondary structure or even the primary structure having characteristics such as these make the case for the building being non-contributing. Looking at the position of the structure, we argue that the location of the structure on the lot makes the structure non-contributing. The structure sits far back on the street, is almost non-visible. The design guidelines state that the dominant rhythm of the street should be maintained. Of the roughly 85 lots along Westwood Avenue, we identified two lots, including the lot in question, that greatly defy this dominant rhythm setbacks. The dominant rhythm of setbacks along Westwood is an average distance of 35 to 40 feet. The structure on our property sits back 138 feet, which is approximately four times that distance. So, where staff states that an infill home in front of the existing structure would greatly alter this rhythm, we would argue that the existing structure itself actually greatly defies the rhythm. This again points to it being a non-contributing to the historic context of the neighborhood. Now turn our attention to the entry condition of the structure, more specifically, the lack of a forward-facing formal entry. Architecturally speaking, the lack of pronounced and defined entry suggests a structure of lesser importance, one that was never meant to announce itself to the street. It is possible this could point to the structure's original intent being a secondary structure, but definitely demonstrates that it was conceived of having a lesser significance to the street and the neighborhood context. Even the examples that staff cite to show other structures being located at the rear extremes of the lot have a forward-facing entry defined by some sort of porch, roof form, or combination of both. Our structure simply does not have this, demonstrating its lesser significance, and again, showing it does not contribute to the historic neighborhood context. Lastly, staff briefly mentions 2008 Natchez Trace, which by our research, we have ascertained that it was built in 1930, and it was actually on the National Historic Register. In this example, we see a similar situation to our case. Unfortunately, it is not public record as to what specifically caused the original property at 2008 Natchez Trace, which was also built within the window of historic significance to be deemed non-contributing because it was approved for demolition administratively. Images from public records show the original property presents itself as a more significant through its scale and defined front entry and the surrounding context, so more so than our property. We do not include this example to seek approval based on prior instance, as we understand all situations are considered individually. We simply provide this example to show that structures of this nature have been deemed non-contributing in the past, meaning that this is not groundbreaking or precedent-setting decision for the commission to pass. We believe for reasons just stated, there is a strong case, the existing structure at 2121 Westwood, to be deemed non-contributing. It's located to the extreme area of the lot, it does not match the dominant rhythm of the street, and has a less important architectural form. Therefore, it can be reasonably concluded that the existing structure is non-contributing, and a new structure would provide a more visually appropriate addition to the historic neighborhood. And now I'll turn the mic over to the owner.
Hello. My name is Roland Stebbins, and I am the owner of the property at 2121 Westwood Avenue. I currently reside at 2500 Ashwood Avenue. 2121 Westwood Avenue is the first house I ever bought in 2003 as a young, single man. I moved out in 2007, but I decided to hang on to it because I wanted to leave open the option of returning to the neighborhood someday, building a house in the lot, and raising a family there. And so it has come to pass. The first time I brought my wife, Stephanie, to Nashville, she fell in love with it. More importantly, that's the trip she credits that she fell in love with me. And so, in February, I came back to Nashville with my wife and our two-year-old daughter, Cameron. We moved into the house at 2121 Westwood Avenue. Stephanie was three months pregnant at the time, and so we knew we would soon outgrow the small 750-square-foot house if we hadn't already. The three of us were sharing the lone bedroom, and it got kind of cozy. And so, we rented a bigger house, and just in time to welcome our son, Miller, who was born August 2nd at Vanderbilt Hospital. So, our plan had always been to build a house at 2121 Westwood, big enough to accommodate our growing family. And we are here today to ask for the opportunity to do just that. We've gone to great lengths to consult with our neighbors and with the Hillsborough West End Board in an effort to demonstrate that we wish to act in good faith, be as transparent as possible about our plans. We've shown our immediate neighbors the plans, and thereafter, both have signed letters of support, one of whom I believe is here to speak on our behalf. We don't wish to undermine the overlay. We acknowledge that a great deal of effort has gone into instituting it in an effort to preserve the neighborhood. It's a wonderful neighborhood, well worth protecting, and we hope to be able to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stebbins. Will you open public hearing?
Madam Chair, before we open the public hearing, I just want to state for the record, the applicant's architect and I have had some previous conversation, not at length about this, but generally some of the salient points about setbacks and other things, but I don't think that'll challenge my judgment in hearing this case today.
Thank you for that transparency.
Hello, my name is Randy Haley, I'm the neighbor, live on the left side facing this house. I'm here to support him, he's a good neighbor, he's got a young family, and it's what we need in the neighborhood, we need young families there, not guys like me with gray hair and got my kids raised. So, I would appreciate you guys considering his request. Any approval would be appreciated, and I'm open for questions. No questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We will close public hearing. Sorry, council lady?
Hey, so while I am a new councilperson, I have been involved in the community discussion of this for a while. I'm sorry, I'm Tom Cash. I am councilman for the 18th district. And so I've been following this for months, as has Councilmember Allen. And Mr. Stebbins and Ms. Brown approached Councilmember Allen about, gosh, six to eight months ago, that begun some neighborhood and community discussion. They, the owners have been communicative throughout this process, they've met with a board committee and with the neighborhood board, once without plans, and then they came back a few months later with plans. So they've, and were always willing to answer questions. And I've spoken with a good number of people who do, who are supportive of our overlay, and in fact, were involved in the adoption of it, and do feel that there is something unique about this lot, and that something should be done to help the family. There are also some people who are nervous about setting a precedent that opens up a lot of other infill. I do know that they've shared, as you heard, they've shared plans with neighbors on either side who are supportive, and they have acknowledged that they understand that if this is rented and the house is built, that the original property cannot be used as a second residence or as a duplex property. And you were kind of more involved in the process.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm Councilmember Berkeley Allen, outgoing 18th district and at large, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to compliment the owners on their engagement with the neighbors, they have worked very hard to communicate exactly what their plans are, which is always appreciated. As Councilmember Cash said, there are neighbors on both sides who want to make sure that this is respectful of our historic overlay, so we appreciate the discussion that y'all will have on this. I want to go back to language that was described, talking about the dominant rhythm of the street, and certainly the dominant rhythm of the street is forward on the lot, which to me may give y'all some flexibility to discuss options here. I think that I am willing to support this under the conditions that the back unit continue to have historic protection by y'all, that even though it's now no longer visible from the street, that were any further construction to happen there, that it would be required to be approved by the Historic Commission. So with that, I would simply ask for a robust discussion of some possible flexibility on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council members, and we appreciate your time, and also that you're given time as the new council is about to proceed, so thank you. Anyone else in public hearing? Close public hearing?
Okay.
Well, an interesting case. I applaud both the staff and the architect on the diligence and the seriousness of the research that went into this. It's the kind of decision that makes our job really hard up here. I agree with the staff's feelings and findings on this. I disagree with the architect's finding that it's non-contributing. I think it's very much a contributing structure that does add to the richness of this neighborhood. As everyone here knows, I'm a strong believer in the conservation overlay and don't want to do anything to erode that. That said, the one argument that I do think is salient here and worth our commissioners discussing is, in the 1931 Sanborn map, although it's listed as two different owners, it's shown as one parcel, and with two structures on it, one close to the street and one further back. And I do think there is some merit to be made that this may have been constructed as a secondary structure rather than a primary structure, and I think that could have some bearing on our approach to it.
Along with Cyril, I agree with your analysis. I'm persuaded by the staff analysis and the evidence presented. I'm also not persuaded by the applicant's architect's case that this is not a contributing structure. And I'd also like to point out that whether or not it is a contributing structure is outside our purview, given that we're here to interpret what the guidelines of the conservation zoning overlay say, not whether or not this is a contributing structure. So I kind of feel like that's outside of our purview today, that point individually. I do appreciate the applicant's difficulty and desire to... I do appreciate the applicant's difficulty and desire to create more room for a growing family, have recently done the same. But the fact is that this house is what it is, and it's historic, it's considered a contributing resource in the National Register Historic District, as well as the neighborhood overlay. And it would be, it's not a precedent we'd like to set for other similar lots in Nashville, of which there are many, as were presented. So, if anybody else would like to speak to Cyril's point about whether or not this might have been a secondary structure, I don't have anything to say on that right now, but that's where I am right now.
The arguments of whether it's contributing or not, you make a great point, in that that is a determination that precedes us. I am also engaged and feel like there's been some convincing evidence in how we can interpret the two structures, or the relationship of the two structures as they were originally plotted, and what may have been the intent. And also that there, the absence of a street addressing front door, and really, a presence towards the street, I'm compelled by that argument as well, and certainly, open to some further discussion about, not so much whether it is contributing, but whether this, as an outbuilding of another house, if that is one interpretation of how these houses were originally constructed, if it would be appropriate to build a structure in front of that, proud of that, that would be primary, that's obviously the case that's being presented here, whether that would be more appropriate, or once it was divided, that it retains its significance as it is to the street. That seems to be, if you were swayed by the argument that before it was subdivided, that it could have been an outbuilding or a secondary structure to a primary, that would be certainly what we need to decide.
This for discussion, and since, you know, what we have before us is that this property is deemed contributing historically, and how does a new construction, will it lessen the protection of that historical building, if that new construction is, and how do we keep track of that? Do we?
I don't know that I have an answer specifically to that, but if there were a primary and a secondary structure on the site, and the primary structure were, you know, tornado or fire, or something of that nature, the secondary structure, I don't think would lose its historical significance. And I don't know that there are many cases of that, it's not exactly the same, but I think that would be, it would maintain its significance. The two things aren't equivalent. If a primary structure on a lot burns down, there's a secondary structure, but certainly, I don't think it would lose its historical significance as a secondary structure in that, in looking at it in those terms, in my opinion.
If I could, I'd like to jump in and see if Commissioner Price agrees with this, but since this is what he does, these type of surveys for National Register nominations, among other things. But in my experience, this is a very typical design of principal dwellings, and they often, this particular design didn't have a door or porch facing the street, it was off to the side. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think this is very clearly a primary residence, and that's what it was built for. It's got a restrained Tudor design with a port de coucher. It wouldn't have been built, in my opinion, based on this photo and the other evidence presented, as any kind of outbuilding or secondary residence. And I'd also like, I think that the deed descriptions are more accurate in terms of what this property was, rather than the Sanborn map that shows one, not to say that there, it's not impossible that Sanborn, people who drew the maps were wrong about property lines, they could have been, whereas the deeds are not wrong.
Commissioner Price, could you, and the Sanborn, again, is not infallible necessarily, but there appears to be on the Sanborn, there's several dashed lines associated with this structure. One to the side, which I assume is a primary entry, sort of a side porch, or was used as a port de coucher, there's one in the rear. And there's something on the front that is noticeably absent from any of the photographs. Is that, what could you, what could one interpret from that, if anything?
I'm not sure. It doesn't look like anything's been removed, it doesn't look like there was a door that was there originally that was enclosed, which that might have been an awning, but I can't tell from what's here.
Well, it seems to me that if they built a home in front of this house, the structure in the back wouldn't qualify as an outbuilding, it would be too big for that. And I think the staff is willing to work with the owners to increase the square footage of the house to accommodate more room for their family, and so I would tend to want to agree with staff on their recommendation.
Okay, Leonard Lee?
These are new. Yeah, it's been a, it's rare that these, you know, I mean, these brand-new situations, you know, pop up on us. So, I just, I'm totally on the same kind of train here as Commissioner Stuart Mosley, just, it's just so odd to me, and it's so far back on the lot. You know, and I realize, you know, there's always situations like that, but it's just such an odd one to me that just sticks out, like it wasn't, I don't know, to me, I just feel like it was meant to be something else. And, you know, Commissioner Price makes a great point, I mean, obviously, he does this for a living, so, you know, if he says that. But to me, I guess, before he was speaking, and I was looking at this 1968 property assessor photo, I just, I look at it as like a little drive-up, like, you know, with a, just kind of an outbuilding, but obviously, we don't know if there's a structure in front. So, and again, I think I'm pretty strong in my record of, you know, you have a small house, you know, that you can't make a huge addition, you can't do things, you know, to the back. And so this is, you know, seems to be, on one hand, a small house, just on the very, very back of the lot, but then on the other hand, I just can't, with the Sanborn map and the, you know, the two on the parcel, it's just kind of, I am struggling with that that is the house, you know, in the back of the lot like that. So, you know, again, I'd like to hear more comments on it, but just in keeping with the neighborhood, you know, I'm surprised that I am, but I'm kind of open to doing something with this lot, because it is so odd to me, for the neighborhood and also just the city, so, but I'd like to hear more thoughts.
I think the other thing is that the overlays were created as a tool to help preserve the character of the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods themselves were totally involved in that process, and very much involved with it. You know, we've heard from two councilpeople, we've heard from adjacent neighbors, and in correspondence, we've heard from those that were involved in working with historic to create that overlay. I think they all appear to be in support of this, especially if we include provision in here that the protections be maintained for the contributing home in the back. So, for that reason, I tend to support the feel of being able to go ahead and work with the staff to put the structure in front. That's since a divided vote that we'll have here, but I think that that's, this is one of those difficult, sticky issues. I do think it's unlike the other examples that have been presented, that have deeper houses set back, that were definitely primary residences.
I would like to just quickly point out, on the Sanborn map, it was labeled with a D, which means dwelling, so it was clearly a dwelling at 1931. And I think we really need to tread carefully if we're going to, I'm not in favor of this proposal to build in front, but there are a lot of other lots around Nashville with this situation, and we really need to think about that.
Commissioner Price, to the, to your point on the deed and census information, prior to what is known, there's no record prior to, I guess, what's been researched, which is that the deed in '26 showed them as separately owned, and we can't make any assumptions further than that, in terms of for what reason they were built, or at what time was one before the other, was one, were they built by the same owner? Any of those things can't be known prior to that. The earliest record we have is that they were separately owned.
Sometimes you can, depending on the extent of your deed research, you can find out more in terms of how they're related, but deeds very rarely mention buildings, the buildings themselves, it's just the property.
And I can explain a little bit more, because I did the research. So, the two parcels were owned by the same people historically, from the time it was subdivided, up until 1926. And from the directories, because you can also date houses by directories, which is kind of our primary way of figuring out when a house was constructed, this house appears first, and then the other one appears, I don't remember the exact date, but I think it's a couple of years later. So, I mean, one theory is that they built the house, sold that off, and then built the other house next door. Because this property to, I guess it's 2119 now, 2113 then, seems to appear in directories later than the one at 2121.
So, for clarity, 2121 appears first in the deed, in the research that was done?
Yes, in the directories, yes.
I guess I still find it, I'm kind of hearing everything that Commissioner Stuart and Jones and Mosley are saying, and I still find it, we do have some historical information, but it's still inconclusive. So, knowing that they were shown together, I know the Sanborn map could have been wrong, but they were shown together on the Sanborn map, and then deeded later. There's so many stories we could come up with why that house was, you know, why 2121 was built first, it could have been a house constructed while they worked on a larger house, it could have been, you know, a house constructed and became an in-law's quarters, or, I mean, there's so many ways that it could have been a, also been a dwelling, but not necessarily an outbuilding. But it's just, it's inconclusive enough for me that I have a hard time saying that it has to remain as is without a secondary dwelling.
I think we might be getting carried away on the use of this property as it was constructed. In my opinion, the guidelines don't, it doesn't matter. In our charge, this is a contributing building in a National Register district and a zoning overlay, conservation zoning overlay. What it was built for originally was, in my opinion, was clearly a house, and it's labeled that on the Sanborn. The other house next to it, 2119, is not that much larger, these were small houses originally. So, I don't see that we have a whole lot of latitude under the guidelines, based on a discussion of use.
Just to play devil's advocate, we don't know the massing of the house, though, we just know that, we just see the footprint, we don't see the massing of the other house.
Do you have a picture of that?
We could pull one up. I don't know if you see it in any of the photos because of the, but I can try and pull one up for you.
Is that it?
Yeah. I don't know if that is it.
Ms. Chair, I kind of want to hold comment until we see how this goes, but I must say that there's all, the presentation by the applicant is well-done. Conversation with the commissioners here, discussions is, again, very thoughtful and deliberate on how we look at these in a big picture. And I think one thing that I do note is that we, our purview is not about use, so I kind of agree with that thought, is that we need to keep in front of us what is before us, and what this structure is historically. So with that said, we'll wait on that picture.
This is the tax assessor photo, recent photo of 2119 Westwood.
I'll just note it, it's a similar, small Tudor revival cottage.
Commissioners, discussions continuing? Any other thoughts?
I mean, with the, I guess I'm just, where, with the use withstanding, to me, it's just, you know, and honestly, I came, when I did all this research before the meeting, with all the information, I was, you know, it was like, okay, you know, no question, this will be, this will be an easy vote. And so, but as we've talked and different things, I just, I don't, I just, it's such a weird, interesting, specific lot. Again, you know, the neighbors, you know, as Cyril said, I realize there's the one hand, which is upholding a sector of exterior standards, yes, and the other hand, which is, you know, keeping the, you know, conserving the neighborhood, and, you know, so it is, I am going back and forth with those two things, where it's just such an odd one to me, that I just don't see, you know, even if, then I were not supposed to look, not supposed to look at use, but say it was supposed to be an outbuilding, you know, now these people have to, and it was a dwelling, but it wasn't meant to be the main dwelling, you know, now these people have to live in this not meant-to-be-main dwelling. I don't know. So that's kind of what I'm going through, but I just, I think I'm kind of flipped from my original thoughts when I came to the meeting, and so I'll just wait to hear what everyone else thinks.
So, in the interest of moving this along, we've had good discussion, I will propose a motion for consideration. And with respect to 2121 Westwood Avenue, I move that we approve the concept, the possibility of putting a house in front of the new house, that would be in full conformance with the design guidelines, and that the existing structure, the protections under the guidelines be maintained and enforced by the historic zoning.
There's a motion? Is there a second? Second, all in favor, please raise your hand. There's two, there's three, four, that motion, and those opposed to the motion, raise your hand. There is three.
What are you going to decide?
All right. Now I can- We're not ready to make the motion.
I will. On 2121 Westwood Avenue, I move that we adopt, we approve the staff recommendation.
There's a motion? Is there a second? Second, all in favor, please raise your hand. There's two, there's three, four, that motion, and those opposed to the motion, raise your hand. There is three.
What are you going to decide?
All right. Now I can say, again, I'm going to say I'm compelled by the applicant's reason and logics because there is, that could happen. My other is, is there are options, and the options are to expand the current contributing structure, and that staff is willing to do that. So, there's not a dead end to this project, and that's where I'm compelled. Thank you for the input by neighborhoods and council members, because those are important. However, our charge is to follow guidelines, and we do the best we can as a commission. So, we just want to say that and acknowledge it because we are in public hearing, and the neighbors hear us, and other neighborhood conservation and historic overlays hear us. So, what I will be voting on is the disapproval of this new construction, and hope that the architect and the staff can continue working on making a viable home for the applicant. So, thank you. I think that concludes our projects. Next comes consolidation.
As that presentation's pulled up, I'll go ahead and get started. The Metro Historical Commission received a certified local government grant from the Tennessee Historical Commission for the Design Guideline Consolidation Project. The funding was specifically to hire a consultant to create a form book for outbuildings. The project began in January 2019, and the grant period will end at the end of this month. It started because of several years of concerns from commissioners and applicants, that the design guidelines were not always clear, especially when it comes to outbuildings, and that the guidelines do not address some of the actions that were simply not considered at the time these guidelines were first written. The first neighborhood conservation zoning overlay was created in 1985, and none of those guidelines have had any kind of significant changes. The project is only for the existing 23 neighborhood conservation zoning overlays and does not affect other types of historic zoning overlays. No new overlays are part of this proposal, and no boundary changes are a part of this proposal. One goal is to clear, to provide clearer direction and address actions not contemplated when the guidelines were originally written. The revision also tightens up language that deals with form, massing, and scale while trying to loosening restrictions for details. Another goal is to address criticisms that the formula that we currently have for outbuildings is too confusing, and it requires calculations based on existing conditions that some applicants just don't wish to tackle. If approved, applicants will have the choice of following the simplified formula provided in the text language, or simply picking a form from the form options. There are three parts to this project. Part one is a consolidation of all neighborhood conservation design guidelines into one basic set of design guidelines, with part two being individual chapters for each district. All the neighborhood conservation design guidelines are already very similar, but the consolidation will provide an opportunity to reorganize and add clarifying language. The third component is to create new guidelines in a plans book for outbuildings, to provide more flexibility in terms of size and design, and again, clearer guidance. The process for this included monthly meetings with the stakeholders group, started back in February, three general community meetings, and regular sharing of information and meeting dates throughout, through the stakeholders directly with their neighborhoods. It included a webpage that included multiple resources, and a multi-month online discussion board, which will continue until November 20th. Now we're working with the stakeholders to schedule some additional community meetings, which is why we ask for you to defer your decision today. Three have been scheduled so far, and all that information can be found at nashville.gov/mhc. And anyone can attend any of them or all of them, the presentations will be primarily the same. And I'd like to take this opportunity to really thank the stakeholders and the council members who've been involved, because they've been the glue that kind of held all this together and really helped us, and they were all volunteers, helped us to get the information out to the neighborhoods. Again, today, we are asking that you not vote, but simply take in public comment. Let's see, design guidelines are delicate balance between prescriptive language that provides specific rules, and non-prescriptive so that the guidelines can address a multitude of scenarios. The goal of any set of design guidelines is to both provide applicants a planning tool and to provide the board or commission with a decision-making tool. So we think it's important to remember that historic overlays are just one tool that neighborhoods have. There are many issues neighborhoods are facing today, such as increased traffic and parking, loss of rear yard privacy, water runoff, short-term rental impacts, and loss of old growth trees. And although these are all very real concerns in our neighborhoods, they are not something that a design review process is designed to address. Our role as commissioners and staff is to protect the overall character, historic character of these districts. The proposed revisions come from staff's experience with applicants and council members over multiple years, discussions with the stakeholder group, the online discussion board, research of other cities, a 2008 study of local historic garages conducted by our office, and advice from consultants Smith G. Studio and the Nashville Civic Design Center. It's not possible to provide a summary of every single change in any meaningful way because there's 23 different districts. The report you received, and it has been online, goes into greater detail than what I'm about to cover now, but I did want to provide some information on what we thought were the most substantial changes. I encourage anyone listening to read the full report, again, at nashville.gov/mhc. The first issue that we wanted to talk about has two parts. The drawing shown here is currently in all the neighborhood conservation design guidelines, and it's often read as showing the only place where an addition can be constructed, that little triangular place in the back. However, that's, as you well know, that's not the case. Instead, it is meant to show that if an addition is small enough to fit into that triangular area, then the addition would not need to be reviewed. So, hold that thought for a minute. A related concern is the text portion of the design guidelines, which attempts to state what is reviewed, and it's confusing. In one section, it only, it states that it only applies to areas that are visible from the public right of way, but in the very next section, it says that public facades are more carefully reviewed than others, insinuating that all the facades are reviewed. Since the establishment of the first overlay, the commission has interpreted these sections to review of all sides of any new construction, but has applied a less stringent review of those facades that are not publicly visible. So the proposed solution is to replace the image with a list of actions that would not require review. Removing the image is not likely to cause a hardship for applicants, as the commission only receives one or two requests a year for additions that would meet the conditions that you see in the drawing. By the time staff gathers enough information to determine if a review really is needed or not, we already have enough information to just go ahead and issue the permit. So permits for small additions typically have been issued and will continue to be issued within a couple of days. We also recommend clarifying the text to meet the interpretation of the last several decades. Included in the proposed sections for partial demolition is removal of siding as an action that requires review. In a neighborhood conservation zoning overlay, replacement siding, windows, doors, and roofing are generally not reviewed. However, if more than two are being replaced, they have been considered partial demolition. However, again, when all those features, or even just two, are removed, the result is the actual demolition of the building. Siding on historic buildings often contributes to the structure of a building, so there have been cases where a building has completely collapsed once the siding and everything else has been removed. Therefore, staff proposes to add removal of siding as an action that is reviewed. The proposed language would not prevent replacement siding, it would just provide a review process to keep historic siding where possible. Part two is all the individual chapters for each district, where language specific to each district was collected from the current guidelines. So, all districts would follow part one, and then their relevant section in part two. There are very few changes recommended for individual districts. One is to clarify in both the Belmont Hills Borough and Bowling House districts that if a two-story building is appropriate, then it should have a hipped roof. That's been the policy, but just not officially in the guidelines. Recently, property owners in Cherokee Park neighborhood asked that stone be included as a potential primary siding for infill. Right now, it's just brick. New short histories have been written for the Elmington, Greenwood, and Maxwell House chapters. This doesn't change any of the guidelines. Recently, the Greenwood neighborhood stated that they would like all infill to be capped at one and a half stories, so that has been added. In the Lakeland Springs East End Design Guidelines, there were references to MDHA's design guidelines for five points, just to try to help people plan. This language has been removed since the MDHA district will expire next year. The draft also includes some italicized information that has been followed for about eight years or more as unitalicized guidance, and that's primarily in a couple of areas where there's very little historic context. Recently, the Woodlawn neighborhood requested a clarification on attached and detached garages, and that information that went through several public discussions, community meetings, has been added. Part three is the form book for outbuildings proposed as an option to the formula provided in part two. Outbuildings have been problematic, as new outbuildings have not followed historic precedent. When reviewing infill, the historic context is used to determine appropriate scale and massing. Likewise, the existing building is used to design additions. But outbuildings are unique in that they historically were not necessarily scaled to the historic building, or even designed to complement the building, which they shared a lot with. Outbuildings affect overall historic character, but not to the same extent as other types of new construction because of their minimal visibility at the rear of lots. For instance, for infill and additions, every lot and every building is different, so it's easy to explain why one property was given approval for an action that might not be appropriate for a different property. But again, when it comes to outbuildings, there are few physical factors that drive that design. Outbuildings serve many more purposes than they once did, and many now serve multiple purposes. Although they have minimal visual impact on the district, they can still visually impact the district, and still need to be small in scale and incidental to the primary form in order to be appropriate new construction in the overlays. For years, the applications that the commission was receiving were just somewhat larger than historic examples, mostly to accommodate modern vehicles, but more and more, there's an expectation that an outbuilding will have multiple purposes. It would be a garage, a home office, apartment, studios, poolhouses, for instance. The Urban Land Institute recently hosted a session called Reclaim the Alley: A New Vision for Connections, Equity, and More, and Commissioner Jones was able to attend that session as well. In that discussion, speakers acknowledged that single purposes are no longer relevant to current outbuildings. So this slide shows the results of a survey of outbuilding our office conducted in 2008. You can see that what you're approving now in no way relates to historic outbuildings. Although the overlay does not dictate how a building can be used, the reality, again, is that the zoning may allow for many of the multiple uses that are expected today. So we must address the massing and form that those uses dictate. The forms provided in part three have the goal of serving multiple purposes while controlling the overall height and mass to be appropriate to district's history and incidental to historic primary buildings. The form options focus on form and mass rather than style in relation to the scale of the primary building, with the goal of providing multiple forms that would be compatible as outbuildings in all of the neighborhood conservation zoning overlays, while allowing for property owners to achieve flexibility in styles and details. Currently, appropriate dimensions for new outbuildings are based on the historic building with which they share a lot, the primary building. However, that has been problematic in multiple ways. In measuring eve heights and square footage, do you include the additions? If so, all the additions are only the historic ones. What makes a historic addition? How do we determine which additions are considered historic? Does someone with a measurable drop in grade get a higher eve just because the grade drops? Does someone where the grade rises get a short eve? It's also been confusing calculation for applicants, especially those who are not designers. The calculation alone has meant the disapproval of some outbuildings that likely would have fit in well in the neighborhood. With historic precedent to provide parameters, and with the goal of meeting multiple modern purposes for outbuildings, staff is recommending multiple form options, many of which could be appropriate, again, on any lot. The goal is to provide a general volume that is expressed in one, and one and a half, and two-story forms, but with some controls over roof forms and wall heights to maintain that appropriate scale. Now I'll turn it over to Smith G. Studio and the Nashville Civic Design Center to explain how the form book could work.
Hello, I'm Eric Hoak with the Nashville Civic Design Center.
My name is Ron Yearwood, I'm with the Smith G. Studio.
So, look at this. So, Robin kind of introduced the timeline for this project, but just a quick recap, introduced the project July 11th, and we had several meetings that she mentioned, and here we are today. So, one thing that we, that helps put information together for this packet here is an online survey that we had, 184 responses, and this is just kind of a snapshot of kind of some of the results of that survey, but mostly homeowners kind of took that survey, and these are just some words that came out in the responses, quick summary. And then the Padlet discussion, which Robin also mentioned, we had over 50 discussions now, and each one of those had anywhere from zero to nine threads on top of that, so a pretty good online discussion there. We had several stakeholder meetings, and we tried a software called Mentimeter, which was an interactive way to present the findings, and was, we were able to get feedback, and we had over 92 participants in that over the several meetings there. So, the book, this is the cover we're proposing for the part three of the book. It generally discusses what is an outbuilding, why would you build one, the use for them, and the review process and permitting. That's kind of the intro part, and then discussion about siding on the sites, and some just, be a good neighbor, good additional considerations when you're constructing
And for Smith G. Studio's role, we primarily focused on the creation of the different types of forms. And again, these forms are meant to be flexible, but to be appropriate for any of the conservation overlay districts. So this section of the book goes into how to actually use, and how you go about picking a form. On this page specifically, it talks about how to measure, choosing your lot size, so basically, a lot less than 10,000 square feet, which is a typical lot in Nashville, or for the historic districts, and lots larger than 10,000 square feet, and that's how the forms are organized. And when you pick your form, we also talk about additional components that you could add on without taking, without subtracting from your overall footprint, such as dormers, projecting bays, porch. And this page is part of the how-to section, which basically shows how you can manipulate one single form many different ways. As Robin mentioned, they have multiple uses. You could take this particular form, G, the letter G, turn it into a carport with no walls, to a carport, or to a garage with a unit, to two separate buildings, without going over that maximum allowed footprint. All of the additional components are dimensioned with maximums, and each form has its own detailed sheet with specific appropriate add-ons that you could add on to that form, so not every form could have every single component. This is a snapshot of the form option matrix. So there are 20 total forms that we narrowed it down to. A through P are all appropriate for lots less than 10,000 square feet, and options Q through T are for larger lots only. And options A through P could also be appropriate for lots larger than 10,000 square feet, and in that case, could increase their maximum footprint to 1,000 square feet. This is also organized from one-story to one and a half story to two-story, and also gives a brief snapshot of potential uses like garage size, not necessarily use, but garage size. Each detailed sheet, these are just three examples of a particular form, looking at traditional roof forms. The primary difference between our forms other than footprint size, our height differences, and looking at different style, or different forms of roof. So this is a traditional gable form, a kind of a transitioning form, and a more contemporary form. And we provide an example footprint, but also provide that maximum footprint size, so you could do anything less than that footprint that's suggested. But again, these footprints are also based on an actual workable plan, so it's not just an arbitrary footprint. And, again, these forms were kind of narrowed down, and a lot of back and forth with public meeting and staff to come up with the best options.
Just, oh, can we ask? A few of the form options where I saw were two stories, and I realized that generally to get the maximum, you'd want it to be smaller. But is there, we rarely, you know, if it's a small one-story home in a neighborhood, and then they want to do a two-story outbuilding, that's generally discouraged? How was the discussion around that? Do you have a...
Yeah, and that was actually part of our early discussions about actually allowing a larger footprint for one stories, but as you go taller, potentially getting a smaller footprint. So it might make sense and might be appropriate to have a two-story outbuilding, but limiting that to a 500-square-foot footprint. Whereas a one-story, you could almost get an incentive to get a larger footprint, but keeping it a lower-height building.
So I know one of the things that a lot of the citizens and applicants have struggled with in the past was the difference between the definition of outbuildings and daddos. And we've had people that have gone through codes and gotten permission to do outbuildings and then come back and realize that they don't conform to the dada requirements. Did any of this process address any of that discrepancy?
It absolutely did. Your role is to review outbuildings, because you're not reviewing use. You're reviewing the design of an outbuilding. Now, how that's defined in terms of use, whether it's a dada or a detached duplex or whatever, that's up to the codes department. And there has been a lot of confusion for them, for us, for everybody. And so we did meet with them recently and got the commitment that you would look at the design and the bulk standards, so the setbacks and where it sits on the lot, and they will be completely responsible for determining what that building is, dada or detached duplex, and the requirements that are associated with that. So for instance, a dada has a 700 interior limit on living space. Those are the kinds of things they will deal with. You're just looking at it as an outbuilding.
I want to make sure I read this clearly, and that is the intent. I think I noticed item three in the sort of intro page was, if you don't want to start with this, knock yourself out. I just want to make that clear, but I think some of the commentary has been like this...
Yeah, I should have mentioned that at the end. You don't necessarily have to pick a form. You could go through the regular process, review process, and submit something outside of these bounds. Creating these forms is just an option. Yep.
So good work. This is great. It would be great to get some clarity to this and get some of those problems that we've had in the past taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the presentation. Okay. Open public hearing. So please come to the podium and let us know your thoughts. And so if we can keep it moving as well, if you do plan to speak, just make sure you're right behind that person who's speaking.
Okay. I received a letter...
Give us your name.
My name is Trina Payne. I own several rentals and different buildings around here in Nashville. And I get a lot of these disturbing letters about zoning, the interference of being able to do what we want with our properties and whom we want to sell them to, because it does affect us as investors who own these buildings for decades, who now have to falter on a lot of good business deals because of metal slowness, I guess is the best way I can see it. A lot of these buildings are old. That one building for that family that was here, it's not conducive to live in. So why can't they tear it down and build what they want? It's their property, right? So where does the line of keeping that and property rights begin? You know what I'm saying? So where does my right as a property owner end, so that other people can dictate to me what I can and cannot do with my property? So I pay property taxes, do what I'm supposed to. So why can I build and do as I please with my property?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your opinion.
Hi, I'm Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street. I sent a letter in that I hope you all had a chance to read, because there's not enough time right now to talk about everything that I think is an issue with this. But I'm an owner of 912 Architects, and as one of the most frequent applicants in the last few years to this board, I was asked to be a stakeholder, which I was very interested in doing, especially outbuilding guidelines. We're in meetings all the time that are very difficult even for architects, for the commission, for staff sometimes, to understand what to do in a situation. And I was excited to be able to be a part of potentially fixing that. But after sort of the eight months of meetings that we've been through, especially as the stakeholders, I'm not really sure how much input staff has taken at this point. If you look at the Padlet page, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to do that yet, there are, as they said, almost 90 discussions on there, and almost none of them have a response from historic on them. I feel like a lot of concerns were raised, and with each draft of the new guidelines, very few of them were addressed. And I'm very happy that they have pushed back the adoption hearing and established more community meetings, because I hope that we get a chance to continue to talk about it. But, you know, I feel like a lot of those unaddressed comments were new restrictions that were added to the guidelines. The siding one is a very big one. Adding exterior siding to something that is reviewed in a neighborhood conservation overlay is actually a very big deal. It's one of the biggest differences between the historic overlay and the neighborhood conservation overlay. And so to apply that to the neighborhood conservation overlay, which was, you know, sold to communities, there was a lot of community work to get those in place, to add that in now seems like a huge change and needs to really be talked about a lot more, I think, than it has so far. So I'm glad to hear that we are pushing this back and adding in more community discussion. But for now, I just wanted to say again that I don't feel like I can support what's been presented so far. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours.
Good afternoon. My name's Erwin Venek. I'm president of the Woodlawn West Historic Neighborhood Association, who's also a member of the Stakeholder Group. My concern arises out of the plan, the part three, the pre-approved plans. And what remains unclear to me is whether in the presentation of an outbuilding plan, whether those pre-approved plans means that there is not going to be any public hearing about that. To the extent that the language in part three seems to minimize the impact of outbuildings on the flow and the character in a historic district, and that de-emphasis is in stark contrast, in my view, to the recognition that mass and scale have an impact on the character and the design of a historic district. So for example, in my neighborhood, one of my neighbors recently built a one-and-a-half-story outbuilding. Now, to say that that has no impact on the character of my block face, I think is not accurate. It has a significant impact. So from my perspective, looking at the pre-approved plans, there are a number of them that I wouldn't think would be appropriate in my historic conservation zoning district, and they would be out of character. And those plan forms are plan forms C, D, E, H, J, M, N, O, P, and S. I mean, a significant number. So my request would be that insofar as in section two, there are specific manner or specific additions made with respect to the particular zoning districts, that each zoning district be allowed to opt in to say, we find these particular plan forms to be appropriate in our district and others do not. And I think that would solve a problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi. Seth Jennings, 2221 Granland Avenue. Real quickly before I started, Zach Flynn was here. He's at 1011 Bait Avenue. He had to go out to work. He's here about a little over an hour and had to leave, but he wanted me to tell you all he is in opposition to this consolidation, as am I. Briefly, I'm concerned the term consolidation, first of all, and I can't do as good a job as Mark did with his email, went into a lot more point by point, but feels a little misleading. I wish they just said, hey, we're going to add a bunch of more rules and regulations. That'd been a little more accurate. It's also concerning too, because a lot of neighbors didn't know about it, and the ones that did saw this term consolidation, they thought, oh, consolidation, that's good. We're going to consolidate. And again, I think that was not really what this is really about. There are some comments. You all are probably aware. You all saw the ones already in this one. There are a few from September 12th on that I printed off. I'll respect the clock here and not go over, but briefly, here's a couple of them. The summary of changes is one and a half pages long. The new guidelines are over 160 pages long. To say things like some italicized language is no longer italicized, doesn't even begin to help people understand how drastically this change impacts what they can do with their property. One last main one I'll hit on is this. They go into NES polls and the burden for property owners and some clarification on eve height, et cetera. The one I liked the most was the very last one. This reminds me, there's a lady that I won't say her name on Ackland, who has a tiny little house, and her house, every time they add more guidelines, her house is worth less and less and less money. Please be clear on the changes from the current guidelines to the new. Most people have asked for a clear summary that a layman can read. Those that are going to be the most impacted by this are the older families that have lived in smaller homes for the past 50 years. The families that could not afford to expand before these new guidelines are now being told their home has to be permanently smaller than their neighbors. It feels like the new rules will put the burden of creating affordable housing on those that can least afford that burden. I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. John Tesell. I'm an architect, also a member of the Stakeholders Committee, and a resident of Hillsborough West End neighborhood. I was supportive of the conservation zoning overlay when it was implemented there and actively campaigned for it. I won't go into any of my detailed concerns per con on any of the new guidelines, but I do want to reiterate what some of the other people have said, which is that these are significant changes. And some, as small as a word, a sentence, I would ask you as commissioners to please review them in detail. And I understand not just the summary that staff has provided, but the detailed guidelines themselves, as well as how they interact with the part three. I think it is a very complicated change, and I'm not sure that it simplifies from what we have right now. It may simplify some problems and introduce new ones. So I would just ask for you all to give very careful oversight and thought to all those changes as they are proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have a comment, please?
Thank you, Berkeley Allen. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to defer this, to allow some community meetings. I think everyone is really grateful for the opportunity to get a better understanding of the consolidation. I absolutely understand the need to put 23 different documents into here's what's similar and here's what's different. And I hope that we can get to a point where people understand and feel like we've achieved that. But it does sound like there's a little bit more work to do. I would simply ask that we not close the public hearing, that when we, I know this makes it more difficult for you all, but when you meet again in November, that the public hearing be allowed to continue. So, and thank you again for this opportunity and for the staff for all the hard work they've done. I know they have put hours and hours and hours into this, and we're asking them to put more into it. But it's huge, and it affects so many of us. And I think when the neighbors understand it better, then that will be a better outcome. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cash?
I'm good.
Okay. Just wanted to give you some respect on that.
I do like the idea. I do like the idea. But I do like the idea of continuing with the public hearing after these meetings and after the suggestions have been worked into the plan.
Okay. Legal, do you have a comment? What you're going to say, I'm just going to say it ahead of time. We will reopen public hearing in October. So because of the community input that we continue to need to have, so just make note of that, please.
I was just going to reiterate that whoever makes the motion to defer, to include in that motion, that the public hearing would be reopened at that time.
Since you are on the mic?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for our public hearing, and also just to know why and how our process is for deferring and how it is or is not different in terms of how we've deferred projects in the past or applications in the past.
Certainly. So this is a little bit different than what you typically see, because we don't see revisions to overlay districts very frequently. Typically, when you are looking at making a decision, you are making a decision on whether you are going to issue a preservation permit, and that's governed by Metropolitan Code of Law 174420, specifically subsection A. And it requires that as soon as you have sufficient data to review it and you have a meeting and it's on the agenda, and I'm going a little bit more in-depth, it says that when you have sufficient data, you have 30 days to make a decision. Since this board only meets once a month, typically you only have one time where you can meet and take something under consideration. The law does allow for you to have a mutual agreement about deferrals between the commission and the applicant. So that's the typical situation that you're under, and if the applicant agrees, then you can defer, and you won't be held to that 30-day standard. This is different. This is not under 174420. It is actually under 174410, under your powers and duties, and it talks about it in subsection B, which talks about the establishment of our design review guidelines, and it talks about your authority to adopt the guidelines and to have a public hearing, which shall precede the adoption of the guidelines, and to hear testimony and evidence so that you can consider that in your deliberations. This is different because it is your, kind of your application, if you will. So you're not held to that 30-day deferral language, which appears in the preservation permit section. So that's the distinction. So in this case, you could defer it. You could reopen the public hearing. In fact, that's what I would urge whoever makes the motion to include. That way, it's very clear for anybody seeing it on television that may not have gotten a chance to make it today, they know that they will have an opportunity to be heard at the next one.
I don't think we closed public hearing yet, have we? No. Is there someone else in public hearing that would like to speak? Okay.
Now, we'll say, you also can leave it open. That is an option.
Okay, so we won't close public hearing today.
You don't have to close it. Right. You can do it either way.
Okay.
If you haven't already done that, then you can leave it open and then continue to hear at the next one. Or if you choose to close it today, you can close it today and reopen it by motion the next time.
Let's hear what the commission says. And also then, we are in discussion, then we can continue discussion at this point. Okay? All right. First, thank you, Caitlin, for serving as our representative for the stakeholders. You know, it's a lot of time, so just publicly thank you for your time. Yes.
Chairman, could I jump in while everybody's gathering their thoughts? I heard two very specific questions, since I'd like to answer those, and I apologize if I missed some more specific questions. But there was a question about the fact that there's no response from staff on the online discussion board, and that's very purposeful, because we want it to be a community discussion board. We didn't see that there was a role for us to try to, you know, say this is what should happen. The role of that discussion board is to collect information and find out what people think works and doesn't work. So we've, you know, sometimes there's very specific questions, and we've tried to jump in and answer them, but for the most part, that's why we've stayed off of it. And then there was a question about the confusion about a public hearing for part three. And right now, yes, that is the intent, that if someone picked a form, assuming that's even approved, that there wouldn't be a public hearing, just like there isn't a public hearing for other types of projects that you've kind of pre-approved in that list of things that can receive an administrative permit. So that is the intent right now of this draft, and those were the two I heard.
Thank you, Robin.
Robin, unrelated question. This meeting was noticed, and I assume that in November will be equally or similarly noticed?
It will not receive a mailed notice, because you are deferring to a date certain. And there are approximately 14,000 property owners that receive notice. So you might imagine, it's a fairly expensive little thing to do. But we will also be sharing that information on the website. I have a list of about 800 emails that I will send it to, and the stakeholders will continue to get information out via their avenues as well.
And do you announce this on social media as well?
The stakeholders will be doing that in their individual neighborhoods. Whatever avenue they have, it might be a newsletter, it might be social media, it might be a listserv, whatever way they have of getting information out.
And we encourage that as well.
They've been great about that.
Good.
Been a huge help.
Good to hear, because it takes literally a village, as we say, to pass the word along. I mean, social media does get... And we encourage that as well.
They've been great about that.
Good.
Been a huge help.
Good to hear because it takes literally a village, as we say, to pass the word along. I mean, social media does get out there quicker than some things that we don't really want to know about, but this is a good one to know about. So, all right.
I would, I would think that for the reason that this meeting was noticed and in the interest of not noticing 14, as much as we'd like to do that and the expense of that, that we make sure we leave the, leave the opportunity for public comment open.
Okay. So, when we make that deferral motion, we're still in discussion? So, absolutely, we'll note that duly noted.
Madam Chair, I concur with Commissioner Mosley on that point. Since there will not be a separate notice that will go out, it would be advisable for you to leave it open and include it as being open in your next, in your motion.
In your motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I think we're really clear on that. We will keep public hearing open. Commissioners, do you have any comments at this time? I mean, it's also good for us as a commissioner, commission, to be able to review more in-depth because it is a expansive project that's been going on for months. And the fact that we have a rep that's on the stakeholder, but we aren't really going to those meetings, right? Because of quasi-judicial protocol. So, just acknowledge that as well.
I have, I guess, some comment and maybe generate some questions or some discussion amongst commissioners. I applaud the, I guess, the effort and in, of the, specifically speaking about Section Three with the form book. It's not an easy thing to pull together and I think to present. Now, as a design professional, it's something that kind of comes to me pretty regularly. So, at a glance, I can look at it and see how it's organized and makes a lot of sense. That might not necessarily apply to somebody who doesn't do that every day. But I think pulling all that information together is, in an organized way, and presenting it so that it can be in a matrix and be understood. I applaud that. I wonder, in the, and we've seen some scenarios, they're not often, but we've seen scenarios where it's possible, I think, with this form book, that you could get a form that might be inappropriate on a 10,000 square foot lot with a small house that might not exactly, on the surface, feel like an appropriate mix between the two structures and would be rather large in scale to a rather small house. I don't know that that's necessarily the end of the world or a bad thing, but I think to be clear that the judgment of the commission would not necessarily come into play in that regard. And I think one of the commoners and neighborhood representatives, the concern wasn't the same, but I think is similar in that we should just consider that carefully. I don't disagree with, you don't have to split it up somehow. And certainly on a 10,000 square foot lot, there would be more space for an appropriately situated outbuilding to exist. I don't know that it's necessarily an awful thing or a bad thing, but certainly is, could be a result that just by right or by guidelines would be approved.
Architects, because you do work with clients more often than we do, and as Commissioner Mosley has mentioned as well, so how does this guideline help you? And does it or doesn't it? What's your feedback about it as an architect that's hired?
I think there has been, just in the time I've been on the commission, a real clear sense that the public, the applicants, the architects would like something more definitive so that they can know how to go about design. If we can come up with administrative approvals, that saves the process of coming down here and spending an afternoon with us. And so, I think that from what we've heard today, what we've seen on the website, and I certainly encourage others to go, the Historic Commission has a great Nashville.gov portion on the website where you can go and see all the documents and the comments that have been made. And I think it behooves us as well as others to go in and study those and come back so that we can really work with the staff and come up with the best document for everybody.
In terms of its distribution, like the outbuilding, because it, number three, I guess, that's the presentation, which is beautifully presented with much colorful design, is that a handout during, codes? Who gets that?
It's a part of the design guidelines, so it'll be on the website with all the other guidelines.
Okay. And, you know, you've got that hub, Nashville, you know, Metro Hub. Is that information available there? Not just on, you know, like when code says you're going to be doing an outbuilding, a dada, or, you know, that these, here you go.
It is.
Go there.
Yes.
Okay. I think a lot of, a lot of what we're discussing is what I'm hearing is the big picture of this. And, you know, a lot of the details are still in the works. So, I would like to ask Caitlin, in terms of how you've been listening to the constituents and what your take is as well on the meetings.
I believe it's been a couple months because I believe Robin might have to chime in here, but the last month was when they presented the presentation, correct? And then I couldn't attend that one. And then the month prior was, I can't remember. It's been a couple months since I've been able to attend the stakeholder meetings. So, the ones that I attended, you know, were again, were very, the very beginning when these were not, there weren't draft guidelines published yet. So, it was really just ideas and different things for different neighborhoods. So, the comments that I've been reading on the Padlet and since then are all very specific, well, not specific, but specifically targeted. But, so I would say that more, now that they've been published, that I think the neighborhood meetings will be very productive, more so. You know, I mean, they started off with, one of the presentations that Robin gave us, you know, we want to know, "Do you all care about the five-inch reveal? You know, do you care? You know, what are your neighborhoods saying?" And that was the beginning of the conversations. So, those were more in line with the ones I attended towards the beginning of this process. But I think now, or the, at least it sounds like the ones who are commenting and having some issues with things, you know, are for specific things. So, I think now that they've been published, the neighborhood meetings forthcoming will be very productive for all the neighborhoods and staff for, to really get things. Because, you know, in my mind, the Padlet was a lot, you know, just throwing out, you know, adding, you know, there were a couple instances where I did find a couple things, you know, that were added. You know, the NES line was a great comment that I did read and I looked into all the zoning and I, you know, hadn't seen it prior. So, that was one that I flagged. But, you know, otherwise, there was a lot of just kind of, they're adding a lot of things, but nothing specific was said. So, I think the meetings will be a time to really get all those hammered out in the specific neighborhoods that know their overlays. So, I look forward to it. But I want to attend those, right? Correct?
Pardon?
I want to attend those. Will I?
It's up to you.
Okay. I don't know, appropriateness or whatever.
That's fine. But to be clear, the NES language is in the current guidelines. It's not new. But it's obviously, it's language saying that NES line should be buried. I don't know how long it's been there before my time. Obviously, you've never required that. It's something there just in case. Maybe it's a large project, NSP or something like that. For the most part, you've never made anybody do anything with that.
So, one of the comments that's come up, one of the terms that's come up repeatedly during this that a lot of people may not be familiar with, this Padlet, could you, Robin, tell us about what's available on the Padlet, how people interact with that, what kind of tool it is?
Yes.
And what else is available through the website, either on their personal computer or by going to the library and going to the website?
Padlet is really, for me, it was easy to use and I'm not very tech savvy. So, it is an online discussion board, which means you can just hit a little plus sign in the bottom right-hand corner, the link for it's on the website. Go to that link, push that little plus sign, and then you can write a comment. And then other people can comment on your comment or they can give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Now, some people have said, "Oh, but when I do that, it says we're waiting for approval." And that's true. Staff is reviewing them just to make sure there isn't any, you know, foul language or anything like that. But to date, every single thing has been approved and is up there. Does that answer everything that you? Or people can send emails directly to me as well if they don't want to use that.
And is there one Padlet? Because, I mean, I've been reading them via your emails, you know, you've been sending them, but then I haven't gone to the Padlet because you've been sending us all the copies.
Yes.
But then you said this was republished and I saw some comments about a republished Padlet versus an old Padlet. Can you?
Yes. Thank you. So, we started a new version since most of the comments in the old version were about older versions of the document. So, we thought maybe it might be cleaner to start a new one. But you can still review the old one. You can still see the comments in the old one and you can participate in the new one. And that's explained on the website. Thank you.
The one thing I'd like our commissioners to think about, as I think about, is what specifics are you still have questions on and concerns that can be discussed during these committee, community meetings? Because we have questions sometimes and I think it's a good time to have some more clarity ourselves. So, if you have any of those, so you can think of, maybe not today, but to send those to Robin and have that, you know, included in these meetings. And other than that, can someone make that motion to defer and keep the public hearing open for next month?
Madam Chairman, with respect to the Neighborhood Conservation Design Guideline Consolidation Project, I move for deferral with the condition that the public hearing remain open.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So, we are good to go and we are, look forward to hearing more conversation and discussions of the consolidation. Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.